Everybody, so, welcome to the East Hampton Village Board Meeting. Today is June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And I'd like to start the meeting with a pledge. Dave Collins will lead us.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dave. All right, June, could we do a roll call?
Mayor Jerry Larson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Chris Minardi.
Here.
Trustee Arthur Graham.
Here.
Trustee Rose Brown.
Here.
Administrator Marco Balladron.
Here.
And Village Attorney Vincent Messina.
Present.
Thank you.
I'm here, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Melendez.
Here.
All right, so I have a few announcements, and then we'll get into our regular meeting. Our first, our first announcement, my first announcement is, I would just like to thank Rose Brown, who's not running for reelection, for all her service that she's provided to the village over the years. And if you wanted to say a few things, Rose, feel free.
Sure. Yes, this is my last public meeting. And I think it's been almost twenty-four years of public service to the village, which I've truly enjoyed. And it's been very rewarding. It's been a great run. I don't know really where the time has gone. Such a cliche, but time is flying. I wish we could hit the pause button. But I feel it's been an honor and privilege to serve the village resident and the community. And I feel fortunate and so lucky to call this place home, as I know we all do. Such astounding beauty and historic character, and comprised of such a close-knit community that I'm so appreciative of. And, of course, as you just mentioned, I'm stepping away from this seat. But I'll still stay involved. You know, I have three kids that keep me very busy, and a job, and so forth. So I'll be involved in other ways in the village, through community organizations and such. But again, I thank the community residents for their support over the years. You know, I've always tried to make each and every decision based on their best interest, and I thank them.
Thanks, Rose. We really appreciate all you've done for the village. Thank you.
Thank you.
That leads us into the next announcement. Village election will be this coming Tuesday, June twenty-first, at the Firehouse on North Main Street and Cedar Street. It'll be on the second floor this year. And we're hoping everyone will come out and vote. And that will start at noon on Tuesday, and the polls close at nine P.M. So hopefully, everybody can come out and vote. My next announcement is about the Pride Parade. Last weekend, we had a Pride Parade, first one ever in the history of the eastern end of Long Island, and it was well-attended. And we've been lucky to have great weather, and it was just a terrific turnout and a lot of, a lot of fun. So we're gonna make that an annual event. That'll be the first Saturday of every June. Next, we have free yoga. Just to remind everybody, free yoga at Main Beach on Saturday mornings at eight-thirty. And parking is, you don't need a permit, from eight-thirty until ten. We also have Tuesdays at Main Beach. Our music events will be starting at six P.M. on June twenty-eighth. Will be the first Tuesday, and they will go until September sixth. And thank you for all of that, Brad. Doing a great job with the foundation. Next, I bring up a photo, Jody. Do you have a photo, just as we had promised? Chief Tracy is in his last eighteen months of service for the village. And we promised we'd have a photo of him at every board meeting. So if you could pop that photo up, and then, Chief, could you explain this photo to the audience? And this will be done every board meeting, so the photos are gonna get a little, a little different each meeting. Do you have that photo, Jody?
Should be up.
Jody can't hear us, apparently.
I, I can hear.
Can you text him, Marcos?
Mike, the photo is of you vacuuming yesterday, Village Hall.
Well, you know, it's, it's interesting. I just happen to have a couple of photos here. But I'd like to show this one first. It appears to be the Chief of Police shoveling the Main Beach parking lot. And this one here is the Chief doing dangerous electrical work in the basement of Dispatch, closely followed by the Chief acting as a fuse for the main emergency panel at Police Headquarters. And not to be outdone, the Chief vacuuming the rear of Village Hall yesterday. I was prepared, just in case there was any, any photos available for today, and I, as you can see, I was willing to lend a hand, and brought my own photos.
Yeah. Well, thanks for that. Now you just covered four meetings for us. So, all right, Chief, why don't you talk about Juneteenth? Chief Tracy was given the task of putting together a celebration for Juneteenth, and he's done a great job. And if you could explain what you've done and what's going to be happening, that would be great.
Yep, thank you very much. So back in March, the mayor and Reverend Thompson got together and began talking about Juneteenth, and what would be a suitable presentation to the, to the village residents and to our neighbors on, on Juneteenth. And I met with the Reverend several times, along with the mayor and Marcos, the village administrator. We collectively decided that Herod Park would be the best place, and we then began planning a presentation. We figured for the first Juneteenth celebration, we were gonna do it without food, you know, very low-key, and bring in some local speakers, as well as some from the outside. And our goal is really to educate the community about the importance of Juneteenth. And I think we did quite well with, with a group of representative speakers, and we're very, very lucky. I've got some super-nice people the Reverend was able to bring in. Well, you'll see by the list. And, and we have, in fact, the Reverend has a Dr. Louis Brogdon coming. He's gonna be our keynote speaker. He's the Associate Professor and the Director of the Institute for Black Church Studies in Louisville, Kentucky. Obviously, the Reverend Thompson will be speaking for us and giving us some words of wisdom as well. We have Arthurine Dunn. She's a well-known local English teacher at the high school. She is the chairman of the department also. She is gonna be speaking about some experiences in her life and her childhood. And I think it would be very, very interesting. We also have you, King, our historian, and we also have Evy Ratray, who, as most of you know, worked on the Plain Sight Project. She's gonna be bringing us some additional information on what they've been working on lately. And overall, I just think it's a, it's an outstanding lineup. I think we also have two local singers who are gonna be working with us. They're gonna perform for us several songs during the, during the ceremony and during, in between the speeches. And it's really gonna be a nice time. But I would like to also introduce the Reverend Thompson. He's here with us today. And he's the driving force that basically, you know, made this happen this year. And it was a great guidance to me.
Mayor, I think there was interference with Mike's mic.
Was he, was he, was he finished?
Yeah, I think, I think he has some kind of interference with his mic, Reverend, so.
Okay. Well, let me just, let me just.
I'm gonna mute you, too.
Can you mute yourself?
Did you mute Mike?
Mike is muted.
Yeah, mine, yeah, mine is, mine is going in and out.
Here, Mike, let me.
Chief Tracy, can you mute yourself there?
I got him.
Yeah, every time I mute it, and I mute it, it kicks me off.
Yeah, Mike, you gotta mute.
You gotta keep it muted.
Have to shut it off.
All right, Reverend.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. Thank you, Mike, for cutting off that sound. We, I think you provided a great introduction. I am looking forward to this weekend. It's been a full weekend of just celebration and excitement in the village of East Hampton. And as the pastor of Calvary Baptist Church located in East Hampton, I am proud to, to be able to, along with the Mayor Lawson and Chief Tracy, and the entire administration of East Hampton, as we look forward to this time of liberation. You know that historically, back in eighteen sixty-five, there was a liberation and manumation, manumention of the enslaved people down south. They received, of course, word of their liberation, their deliverance and freedom by the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation by President Lincoln. What our focus is, is, along with the village, is to really highlight our acknowledgement of that liberation and to celebrate as a community together. I believe this is an opportunity for us to begin to coalesce together and collaborate as we move forward as a model for other communities to see how we can celebrate the diversity that we share in this community, and, and bring about social, political, and economic change for all people as we work together. So I, I'm excited about this day. And the keynote speaker, a matter of fact, I am on my way to the airport now to, to pick up Dr. Brogdon. But I just want to thank the administration, thank the village. Again, Mayor Lawson, Chief Tracy, for, for their working together to bring about a great day and a highlight what will be, I think, a great moment in the history of East Hampton. As I will say, on Sunday, we, we are coming together, not so much to highlight the pain of the past, but also to, rather than, rather than scattering the darkness, we've come to gather the light. I'll just put it like that. And it gives us an opportunity to shine as a community and understanding that there is unity in diversity. And I'm so excited. I saw the flags down Main Street. It's just, just, it's just an exciting time in the air. It's Father's Day as well. And so it's just an exciting time. So I'm looking forward to having a great day on Sunday. Are there any questions for me?
I have a question. What time will this be starting at Herod Park?
It's gonna be two o'clock. Two o'clock, Tiger.
Two o'clock.
Reverend, could you explain the symbol on the flag to everybody?
Well, of course, the star, the star, of course, represents Texas. Of course, I grew up and was raised in Houston, raised in Houston, Texas, of course, which was sixty miles from Galveston, Texas. And so the, you know, the star, of course, represents the state of Texas. But the red, white, and blue is inclusive, that it is not just African-American history, but it is American history, which is inclusive. So, you know, the star, of course, represents Texas. You know, the red, white, and blue represents, you know, the totality of who we are, unifying the nation together in bringing a closure to a dark past.
Thanks, thanks very much. So it's from two to four at Herod Park, and we hope everybody can come out. It is Father's Day. And, you know, we're gonna have a really nice time. We have a great bunch of people speaking and singing, and should be a really nice time for the whole community. So hopefully, everybody can join us. I just want to thank Tarbit and Lester, the law firm of Tarbit and Lester, who paid for the banners up and down Main Street in Newtown, and the foundation. Brad, thank you for your contribution sponsoring this event as well. And of course, thank you, Reverend. Without you, we wouldn't be able to have it. So thank you very much.
Well, I thank you for your leadership and your willingness to step out front along with me together. So I'm looking forward to it and having a great time with the village and all the people in our community.
Me, too. So I'll see you there Sunday. Thank you for coming on. Drive safe.
Thank you all.
Alrighty. The next presentation will be from you. You?
Hi, everybody. About two months ago, I gave everybody a name to investigate, and then it got lost because I was, wasn't at a meeting. And then apparently, everybody didn't get my email. But I think trustee Graham has a report. But a couple of these have something to do with what's gonna happen on Sunday and Saturday. So, trustee Graham, you did, you were supposed to do Isabella Beecher Hooker, right?
Yes, Isabella Beecher Hooker. Born in Litchfield, Connecticut. She was the daughter of Lyman Beecher, who was the preacher at East Hampton from seventeen ninety-eight to eighteen ten, and then moved to the Congregational Church in Litchfield, Connecticut, eighteen ten to eighteen twenty-six. So Isabella Beecher Hooker was born in Hartford. She was, her mother was Lyman Beecher's second wife, Harriet Porter, who we married in eighteen seventeen in Litchfield. Isabella's stepsisters were Catherine Esther Beecher, Harriet Elizabeth Beecher Stowe. She had five stepbrothers and three full brothers. Now, she attended her sister Catherine's school in Cincinnati and Hartford. She married John Hooker in eighteen forty-one and spent the next twenty-five years raising her children. In eighteen sixty-one, her ideas around women's rights came into focus after attending a lecture in Hartford by nineteen-year-old Anna Dickinson on behalf of the Republican Party. And in eighteen seventy, she wrote a letter published in Putnam's magazine, "A Mother's Letter to a Daughter on Women's Suffrage." After attending women's rights conventions in New York and Boston, she founded the Connecticut Women's Association and Society for the Study of Political Science. Originally concentrating on women's rights to own property in addition to suffrage, she spoke on the need for female police officers as well. Isabella Beecher Hooker was at the forefront of the women's movement. And while not as famous as her stepsister Harriet, she was arguably the most influential female member of the Beecher family. And it is not really known if she ever stepped foot in East Hampton.
Yes, thank you. Did anybody else get to do one? Okay, let me skip to Harriet Beecher Stowe, because she was not born in East Hampton, but her book Uncle Tom's Cabin, of course, was a huge influence leading up to the American Civil War. Roxanna Beecher was the wife, the first wife of Lyman Beecher, and she lived in the, in the house where Village Headquarters are, and she had a school there. Catherine Beecher also lived in the house in East Hampton. And her description of the inside of the house is one of the few ways that we know where things were when the Beechers lived there. And then, and then Catherine Beecher, Catherine Beecher, Roxanna, we did Harriet, Isabella, and then Cornelia Huntington is important to the Civil War because in eighteen sixty-one, they put a flagpole, a liberty pole, up on Main Street in between the Hunting Inn and the LVIS Building, which in those days belonged to the Hunting family and the Gardner family. And her odes were sung in eighteen sixty-one at the beginning of the Civil War. And two more things, and then I'm done. Tonight, there's gonna be a historic walking tour sponsored by the East Hampton Historical Society, up and down Main Street. And then tomorrow at nine-thirty, the town is going to rename the park on Abrams Path in honor of Lee Hayes, the great Tuskegee Airman. Okay? That's all I got.
Great, Hugh. Thank you very much. All right, next up, June, we have two public hearings. Could you read the first?
The first is a public hearing with respect to the acceptance of a conservation easement from Lily Pond Equities by the village of East Hampton over property located at thirty-three Lily Pond Lane, East Hampton, also known and designated on the Suffolk County tax map as three oh one dash thirteen dash thirteen dash eleven point one.
Great. Billy, would you mind just telling everybody what this is about?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. This is a requirement to comply with the zoning board of appeals determination. If the scenic easement covers the dune area on the seaward side of the property, and it just adds an extra layer of protection over the dune area. And it, the benefit is that it puts future owners on notice that the area is to remain in a natural state, free of structures.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I just had one. I got a lot of answers yesterday. Thank you, Billy. But there was one, they had lights in that front structure. Those are gonna be removed?
Yes, correct. The lights and the fencing is to be removed.
All right, so all that's gonna be left is the walkway down to the beach.
Correct. And they have a stone revetment. Obviously, that remains.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Jody, are there any callers?
Anything that saves and conserves property is a good thing, so.
There are no callers on the line.
Jody, any callers?
No callers.
Jody? No callers. He just sent me a text. No callers.
No callers yet.
Okay. Yeah, I just saw it. I saw the text. All right, so can I get a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that hearing is closed. June, could you read the next?
The next is a public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget.
Alrighty. Board members, any questions, comments?
My only comment on the budget is I think that Dominique and Marcos did a pretty good job adjusting, you know, for anticipated inflation, and also leaving some room that if things go south on us economically, that they have things that they can deal with to keep us solvent.
Yeah, I second that. I think they did a great job, so.
Thanks, Tiger. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. And Dominique is in Belgium. I'm sure she appreciates that as well.
Nice. I'm sure she's tuning in.
She's tuning in, I'm sure.
Jody, any callers? Just answer me on the text. Still no callers. Okay, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed. We're gonna jump, well, public comment. We have no callers, so there's no public comment. We'll get right into the motions. June?
Okay. Resolution number one hundred and eleven, approve claim vouchers for the month of May.
So moved.
Accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and twelve, approve warrants as listed. General Fund number fifty-six, number fifty-eight, and sixty, guarantees number fifty-four, Lo Sap number fifty-seven, and fifty-five, annual Lo Sap field.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and thirteen, approve budget transfer schedule nine, reference nine, dated June tenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and fourteen, approve departmental reports.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and fifteen, approve minutes from meetings held on April twenty-second and May twentieth of this year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Second. Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and sixteen, accept conservation easement pursuant to New York State General Municipal Law, subsection two forty-seven, from Lily Pond Equities for property located at thirty-three Lily Pond Lane, Suffolk County Tax Map three oh one dash thirteen dash thirteen dash eleven point one.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Oops. Resolution number one hundred and seventeen, adopt the two thousand and twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-three budget.
I moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and eighteen, approve the eight thousand six hundred fifty-two dollar and ninety-nine cent donation by the East Hampton Village Foundation earmarked for an ATV for the police department.
So moved.
Before we vote on this, Mr. Mayor, this is going to be something that the foundation is funding this, and then we're gonna buy it? So does that have to go to bid, or?
No. They, the ATV, well, can you answer that, Marcos?
Yeah, sure.
On state contract?
It was on state contract, I believe.
We don't have to bid on it, Tiger.
We purchased three ATVs, and the, the foundation was kind enough to be able to get, you know, one more that we needed. So we, we planned to get two, they got the third, but it was off state contract.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Brad, thank you for that. That's much needed. And again, the foundation has contributed over half a million dollars to the village in equipment, from ATVs to cameras, to helping us with the Centennial. It's just, it's just been incredible, the amount of money that the foundation has raised and has been able to contribute to things that the village really needs. So thank you, Brad, for all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you.
I'll second that, then.
You're seconding the motion, Tiger? Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and nineteen, to amend the two thousand and twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two budget by increasing the estimated revenue and appropriations in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven four hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents received from the East Hampton Village Foundation for expenditures related to public safety.
Now, that, that contribution is for the cameras that are going on all of the different municipal-owned buildings, so that we have, you know, video capability at each location. Again, thanks, Brad. I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and twenty, authorize the transfer of four hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and five dollars from the General Fund to the Fire Department Lo Sap Program.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and twenty-one, authorize the transfer of ninety-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars from the General Fund to the ambulance Lo Sap Program.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and twenty-two, approving the four percent increase in police officer David Hanson's base salary as per the PBA contract for college credits effective June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and twenty-three, accept Brandon Regan's resignation as part-time Department of Public Works laborer effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and twenty-four, employ seasonal beat staff Liam Cashin as attendant at twelve dollars hourly, and Michael Esslin, Andrew Overby, and Charles Parlo as lifeguards at eighteen fifty hourly.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and twenty-five, approve the promotion of lifeguard Emma Silveira to lieutenant at twenty dollars hourly.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and twenty-six, approve rate increases for jet ski certified lifeguards Kevin Bunce and Luke Campbell to nineteen dollars hourly and Reed Jones and Aiden Cooper to nineteen fifty hourly.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one hundred and twenty-seven, accept Tim Payne's retirement effective July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Just like to say thank you to Tim. He's been a longtime employee of the village, and we will miss him.
Resolution number one hundred and twenty-eight, accept Augusta Folks resignation from the planning board.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Like to thank Gusty. Gusty's been a good friend and, uh, longtime village resident, but unfortunately, she sold her home here and she's now living in Sag Harbor, so we wish her the best and thank her for all of her hard work.
Resolution number one twenty-nine, employ twenty twenty-two seasonal traffic control officers as listed, Joseph Nesbit, Danielle Fingleton, Jose Garcia, Jacina Malat, Donato, Matthew Viscano, Sarah Ergiles, and James Villar at sixteen dollars hourly.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution one thirty, employ Alyssa Cortez as a twenty twenty-two seasonal EMT at twenty-three dollars fifty cents hourly effective June twentieth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution one thirty-one, approve the nine thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollar eighteen cent payout to Christian Landano for unused accumulated time earned while employed as a TCO.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. So just to let everybody know out there, Christian was, um, probably for the last four years, he's worked for us as a traffic control specialist, which is a full-time position in the village. And he went to the part-time police academy for us, and now we just hired him as a full-time police officer effective June fifteenth. So that's why he had to give up this other job because he's working for us full-time as a police officer. And we're really happy about that. He's a great kid, and we look forward to a long career with him.
Resolution number one hundred and thirty-two, accept the status change to inactive exempt for fire department member Mike Heller of company number one effective May first, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution one thirty-three, accept new fire department members Trevor Darrell of Fire Police Company number six and Nicholas Lloyd of Engine Company number two.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Welcome to the new members.
Resolution number one thirty-four, deem surplus and approve the disposal online auction sale of a hundred and twenty-four radios and seven pagers as per ambulance chief Ann Grabowski's June first email.
I think it was only twenty-four radios.
Yeah. Twenty-four.
Noted.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one thirty-five, reject all March twenty-second bids received for the Newtown Lane mid-block crosswalk improvement project.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one thirty-six, acknowledge and accept the donation of thirty plants from Buckley's Flower Shop for the Hook Mill Green Memorial.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one thirty-seven, approve the villages joining the NPP Gov. Purchasing Co-op Cooperative, which is similar to Sourcewell.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number one thirty-eight, notice to bidders for the below-listed general services with the bid openings to be held on July second, twenty twenty-two at two PM at Village Hall. Then it would be cesspool pumping, HV heating, plumbing, tree maintenance, recycling services, electrical work, pest control, drilling, trenching, mistling, fire suppression system maintenance, and fire department OSHA physicals.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. And that concludes our meeting, correct, June?
Yes, that's it for me.
All right, we're gonna go into executive session next to discuss personnel and real estate. If there's any reason for us to come back into public, we'll notify the press. Can I get a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, meeting is closed. Thank you. See you in executive session.
Thank you.